All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for joining us for the Kent City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Want to make a note that this is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 coronavirus emergency. A live broadcast is available on Kent TV 21, on the City of Kent's Facebook page as well as on our YouTube channel at Kent TV 21. There are also opportunities to a call-in number for the public to access. With that, Kim, would you please call the roll? Here.
Council President Troutner.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Mouchau.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on in the agenda to public or to the agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda from council or from staff?
None from staff this evening.
All right. It looks like the agenda will will stand as written. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to public communications. Under public recognition this evening, we have two items. The first one is our July 2020 Employee of the Month. Each month, the employees at the City of Kent come together and nominate one of their coworkers that is doing outstanding work in their day-to-day tasks or on a special project. And it's an it's an honor to be for this because it comes from their peers. So people that are working with them on a daily basis. Our July 2020 Employee of the Month is Matt Fisher. And Matt was hired as on May 1st, 2018, as a patrol officer in the Kent Police Department. Since that time, he has also served as a member of the Police Science Teaching Team at Kent Meridian High School and a Police Explorer Advisor. Matt's favorite duties of patrol work include assisting on canine tracks, recovering stolen vehicles, because so many rely on their cars to provide for their families, and building relationships with Kent residents and business owners. Matt is rec was recommended for this award for his ability to stay calm and address all aspects of his work. The nomination for this award noted that Officer Fisher demonstrated initiative in his attempt to save a woman's life after a possible DUI collision. His performance was nothing less than exceptional and embodies the Kent Police Department's mission of aggressively fighting crime while serving with compassion. Officer Fisher enjoys spending time off with his friends and being a young life leader at Kent Ridge High School with his fiancee Rachel. Currently, he spends all of his free time renovating his backyard and helping Rachel plan their wedding. Matt continuously supports our values and we celebrate him as July's Employee of the Month. Congratulations to Officer Matt Fisher. The next item we have under public recognition is a proclamation that I had the honor of presenting last week. Many of you know my executive assistant, Patrick Briggs. He retired on July 1st after many years of service to the City of Kent and regional local government. I would like to read this. Whereas Patrick Briggs began his career as a court reporter and from there went on to work for the City of Renton, the City of Federal Way, and the City of Kent for a combined 38 years. And whereas Patrick was hired by the City of Kent on July 2nd, 2007, nearly 13 years ago, to work as the executive assistant to Mayor Cook and then then Mayor Ralph. And whereas Patrick served as a member of the charitable charitable contributions committee, organized the school supply drive for Kent Meridian High School for many years, was a liaison to the Kent Sister Cities Association, attending their meetings, helping organize events, and traveling with the mayors to all the cities. And whereas Patrick is the go-to executive assistant for other municipalities in the region and the other executive assistants reach out to him to organize events and look for advice. And whereas Patrick's accomplishments during his career were many, and he brought a professionalism and caring personality to his work that made all feel welcome and heard. And whereas Patrick is respected for his dedication, loyalty, and his passion for serving the residents of the City of Kent, City of Kent employees, council members, and the mayor. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of the City of Kent, do hereby proclaim the 1st of July, 2020, as Patrick Briggs Day in the City of Kent, Washington, and encourage all residents to recognize the contributions he made to the Kent community by providing excellent service for 13 years. We were very sad to see Patrick retire, very excited for him as he moves on to his next phase. And just I just want to say thank you very, very much, Patrick, for your wonderful service to to our community. Okay, that ends our public recognition unless council members have anything for this evening. Not seeing any hands at this point. So I will turn it over to Council President Troutner, and we have some community events tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do. I'm so excited. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Patrick. Like you said, I know he'll be missed, but nobody is more deserving of this retirement and time to enjoy this special time than he is. So I'm excited to see all the sunny places he's probably going to be visiting very soon. So congratulations, Patrick. Very exciting news to share. The SSO Showware Center is opening a outdoor cinema and it will begin tomorrow. And I have to say, this is a pretty cool venue. The screen is amazing. It's a giant LED screen that at 6:30 in the evening with the sun still out, you can see the movie perfectly. So it will start tomorrow. They will have they will run from Wednesday, the 8th until Sunday, the 12th. And during these five days, they will have two showings. They will have the Land Before Time, which will start at 6:30 every evening. And then Jurassic Park will start at 9:30 PM each evening. During this particular week, they're going to have a mobile Mayan food truck. So if you're trying to decide what you're going to do for dinner before the movie, they will have a food truck available. They also have concessions during the movie as well. Next week, which July 15th to the 19th, they will be showing Goonies at 6:30 PM. And then Raiders of the Lost Ark will show at 9:30 PM. These are presented by the Kent Downtown Partnership, the Lions Club, and Promosa USA. So I want to thank them all for their partnership and for making this happen. You can get information and tickets at ssoshowwarecenter.com. So pretty excited. It's a pretty neat venue. So if you get a chance, make sure you get your tickets because I think they're selling out quickly. And that's all I have.
All right. Any other community events this evening? Okay, seeing none. I do strongly encourage folks to check out the drive-in at Showware Center. It's a it is a great venue. Fun way to get out of the house, spend time with your family in a in a safe COVID-friendly way. So please check that out. All right, we will move on in our agenda. The final item under public communications is our economic and community development update. Joining us this evening is Bill Ellis, our Chief Economic Development Officer. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council and Council President. Thank you. I'm ready to give the update. First slide, please, Kim. So just I want to pick up a little bit where I left off at the last committee of the whole, giving an update on the Small Business Emergency Grant Program. We are in the midst of executing on our outreach plan. We are we well, Michelle Wilmond has been signing up a lot of community benefit organizations to be helpers on the outside. The application will have to be filled out in English, but we are translating into the 10 most prevalent languages in Kent. In addition to the applications that are available from King County. As a logistics matter, though, for review, we need them filled out in English. So we are bringing on board a variety of associations with certified translators to be mentors and helpers and be available to business owners for whom English may not be their primary language. Organizations include the India Association of Western Washington, the Ukrainian Community Center of Washington, the Arabic Iraqi Community Center of Washington. We have a certified Somali interpreter. We are also working with the United Territories Pacific Islanders Alliance and the Somali Education Purpose Foundation and a variety of other organizations and individuals to try to cover all of our language groups that are represented in our highly diverse city. We're also continuing with the grant design, even as we are now. We have an understanding on the contract terms with Craft III, our CDFI partner. That has been sent to their CFO this evening for signature, and we hope to be under signature tomorrow. But that hasn't deterred us in the meantime from continuing to pursue a grant design, creating the application protocol and all of our early material. The selection methodology from King County is under our review now, but we are already, next slide, please. Moving ahead with identifying an application period, and we we're just putting this on our website today. The Kent Small Business Emergency Relief Grant, probably too small to see in your screens, but no worry. If you go to kentwa.gov/businessgrant, you will find all of this information. This is just a repeat on the left-hand side of your your screen there of of the eligibility criteria that I went over at the Committee of the Whole. We are hoping that those eligible businesses apply for these funds. We have decided to increase the award amount to $4,500 after review of the King County funds that we have also received and the guidelines and for their compatibility with the State Department of Commerce grants. So putting the two funds together, it's still roughly a million dollars that we're putting towards this effort, approximately 200 businesses. And we are hoping that businesses, small mom-pop businesses that are most exposed and most vulnerable to COVID-19 closures and business interruptions will be the ones who who apply and will be most heavily preferred in the selection process. After that update, I just want to go now from the micro to the macro. Next slide, please.
Can you hang on just one second?
Sure.
Councilmember Thomas, did you have a question? Okay, sorry. I thought that I heard Councilmember Thomas. Oh, do you have a question?
There I go. Bill, could you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
So I was under, let's see, what is that bullet number? Been in business for three years. The gross revenues, isn't that supposed to be less than 1.5 million?
Yes, 1.5 million or less.
Okay, that wasn't real clear there. I was.
Yeah, it'll be more in detail on the right and the actual file. This is just sort of a summary.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So going from the from the micro to the macro, I just want to revisit sort of the where are we as a country and then, you know, Kent's position in that. So there's been some good news lately in terms of the unemployment rate not ticking up further. And there's been some good news lately, and the unemployment rate actually decreasing. But another ratio to be aware of, unemployment rate isn't the only thing that you're looking at, is the employment-to-population ratio. And and you can see in this chart, the part of the population currently employed versus the part of the population not working has plunged to an historic low. You can see on the chart here, going back to the late 1940s, there's never been a fewer number of people working. And in fact, to get back to where we were in 2000 in terms of the percentage of our population in the labor force, we would need to, as a country, create 30 million jobs, which is a pretty tall order, as you can see from that timescale. Next slide, please. Within the state of Washington, King County, compared to some of our immediately adjacent counties, has fared somewhat better in terms of the unemployment rate, partially because it's considered that our workforce is more skewed into those types of jobs that lend themselves to telecommuting. Next slide. But if we look at other measures of economic activity that are relevant to our subregion in Kent, such as shipping containers or canceled sailings from the ports, the Northwest Seaport Alliance, for instance, watched the number of shipping decrease 24%. We heard from the Sea-Tac Airport that usually on a good day, they would have 60,000 people traveling to the airport. Good day and sort of the COVID-19 earlier phase was 4,000 to 6,000 people. So a precipitous decline in just all sorts of measurable activity. Now, we have a lot of resilient and creative companies here. And still, I would say there's a there's a long, there's a very large hole that we're in. Next slide, please. Lot of, there's a lot of speculation out there, and I just wanted to touch on it because of how it might, how the economy might be changing or how norms of business location might be changing to deal with sort of the, I would say, non-consistent impacts or unpredictable impacts of COVID-19 on the world of work. There's been speculation, but no proof yet that maybe that the office space demands of the future are going to look much more suburban, that the branch location that would avoid you from necessitating getting into a car, I mean, that would avoid you getting on a train or a bus and rather you could commute to by a car is now going to look upon more favorably. So I have an image here of the Warehouser campus and Federal Way. Federal Way's had persistent vacancy in the office space market over 30% for the last five or six years I've lived here after Warehouser moved to the Pioneer Square. Would that trend now reverse with people trying to accommodate social distancing within the workplace, suddenly require much larger office plates, much bigger office space, where they would like to avoid crowded commutes and go to that branch location? That's one piece of the speculation. We don't see the lease rates changing yet to show that to be true, but it's something that people are hypothesizing, something for us to watch closely as we are a suburban office market. Of course, Kent's done better in the suburban office market than our neighbors like Federal Way. But we are actually really well positioned if it were to come back as a location sort of central. Be right ripe for being the next place to be a branch location. You might recall me talking to council some months ago when Jordan Watts Group bought the Centerpoint Campus in Kent, the former Boeing Space Center office buildings under the presumption that we'd be a good branch location office space. On the other hand, when it comes to industrial space, yes, global trade is down, shipping is down. So you would think some of the demand for warehouses is down, but in the top C2 or B world of COVID, industrial space has been heating up. I was I've been hearing lots of deals are being executed, a lot of our property ownership in our industrial market is largely institutional and just a few hands at this point, and they're flush. And there's a lot of anticipated demand in e-commerce as as more sales have been moving online and people are ordering in. So a lot more domestic demand for those things. But on the other hand, there's a lot of reticence, too, and some banks have pulled back on construction loans for new industrial projects being done in spec. Others are self-financing through this period. And everyone's watching anxiously to see if some of the initial business closures that went permanent, if there will be another wave of that after federal relief ends. So the thought for the moment is that industrial demand, industrial space is safe. Industrial will fare much better than, let's say, regional shopping malls. And since so much of our bread and butter in Kent is in the industrial space, we should do better than some of our neighbors who have maybe more eggs in the other basket. We didn't really have as much retail to begin with. Just the caution I would put on that would would be when it comes to industrial space demands, we're still a little bit early. I know it's been months since we've we've all gone indoors and telecommuted, and we're still in phase two. However, it's it's a little bit early to say exactly. And the aerospace industry has taken a pretty large hit. And we've seen some closures like the Tiff Aerospace Group in the South Kent Valley and all of them. Next slide, please. So as an Economic Development Division, what are some of the things that we're continuing to do or we have new focus on? Continue. We always wanted to listen to our business community. I think it's extra important now. We have some survey results not arrived yet from the Community Attributes, Inc., that was done at a regional level, and we invested in a small amount. We have a few hundred businesses in Kent surveyed, waiting on those results still. We are also developing programs, as you know, the Small Business Relief Program, forwarding federal relief dollars to businesses and employees. We've also worked with the Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee and Green River College and the State's Manufacturing Extension Partnership Impact Washington to create a wage reimbursement program, safety training for COVID-19 manufacturing workspace, and some upskilling sort of inducements to retaining employees. So we've been developing some new programs that help take some of the CARES Act dollars and get it straight to our business base, which is the right thing to do. It is good for our local businesses and for our local employees. It also has a downstream benefit, of course, to the City of Kent's own coffers to help businesses through this period. We're also continuing to participate regionally with our with both the Seattle South Side Task Force. We also participate in King County discussions with the Reach Partnership. We also participate with Greater Seattle Partners in their weekly calls. And we're pushing forward with our Kent Valley branding effort. The manufacturing support program that I referenced will be sort of a opportunity for us to put a brand on a substantive program for the first time, put that Kent Valley branding on it. And we are doing our best to complete getting the Kent Valley name out there into web portals. Next slide, please. Things that we paused are given an extended timeline at this point. The Gerson Park Lunar Rover fundraising would be, you know, it's July now, something I thought would be further along. Frankly, we've been we've been in a sort of an emergency footing, working on business needs and these grant programs and other communications pieces, and we have not prioritized that. We have paused that. I will say, though, just interestingly, we were contacted in the last few days by a advertising company in California that had heard of our Lunar Rover and is interested in hiring it for a commercial. We're evaluating that now and see if that could contribute in fact to the fundraising. Meanwhile, we are also have kicked out the timeline for the Hilton Garden Inn franchise approval letter being signed by Braintree Development on the southern half of Naden. I will say it's been a very rough year for hospitality industry. Some of our businesses reported revenues down 98%. It's an historically bad time to be investing in a hotel, and I think we've given it some more time to work through some of the issues identified on that site. Next slide, please. Things that we're now tacking towards or increasing our focus on. Spent some time today and increasingly more time as the weeks go forward here on reconnecting with some of our partners. I'm joining the Committee of the Workforce Development Council of Seattle, King County on industry relationships. We are having meetings put together now with the same partners that we worked on with the CARES Act funding, Green River College, Impact Washington, AJAC, and taking forward next steps to trying to identify federal grants. There's a lot of other federal monies that have passed in that stimulus package several months ago that have already just finally made their way through the cabinets and are available for applications. So we're trying to take. So we're we're trying to take this opportunity with the CARES Act funding that we are incentivizing collaboration with now and then taking that partnership and saying what else could we apply for? Um so that's what I mean when I say partnering across both secondary and apprenticeship. Those are some new partnerships uh that we hope to continue to grow. And given the high unemployment rate is, I think, an appropriate area of focus for us going forward is trying to um. Bring that unemployment rate down and and work on uh. Taking dislocated workers and connecting them to the jobs that do still exist out there. Um we're also investing uh in business development services and I think we need to continue to do so. Um last thing I want to say on this is that there are several ways to accomplish economic development. Uh there's business development, there's workforce development, there's community development, there's many different flavors out there and there's many different strategies. And uh some of the things that our division is working on is not inclusive of all the things that help. Work on the crisis in the economy of broad more broadly. Uh there's a lot of things that our friends are doing in in uh human services. Uh that in the Parks Department that are important as well uh and uh. There's just different aspects to it. Um um. Some of the work that my division is working on in terms of working with industry groups and connecting them with colleges. Or working with uh small business development centers or CDFIs, Community Development Financial Institutions, to. Coordinate uh business development, technical assistance or financial resources to businesses is not uh. Is is complimentary to, I would say, rather than uh uh to some things that you might work on on the supply side or helping uh. Invest in people and work on poverty reduction more directly. Next slide, please. So how can we invest in job creation in this moment of crisis? Um I like to say there's nothing new under the sun. Actually, it's it there's the toolkits for economic developers nationally are are pretty consistent. Um it's just what new strategies, what tools sort of match the moment and the problems that we have on. Uh that we have at the moment and our our crisis of the moment, I would identify as unemployment. And uh trying to think what how do federal grant programs uh match? Uh looking forward, the Port of Seattle is making adjustments to their port partnership program. Uh and they're also uh looking to work with us and our Ajax partnership on uh opportunity youth or or youth apprenticeship more more uh closely. Um there's the continuing advocacy of what are the actual needs, identified needs. Uh of our business community. Um I'm hearing that manufacturers are trying to target late July now for a lot of their job retraining. Um but they're also increasingly interested in automation. So how do we make sure that our uh our school system is pivoting in that direction? Um when it comes to our surplus property at North Nathan Avenue, is there some uses that could exist there that? Also work on our job creation objectives? And how are we making sure that what we're pursuing locally aligns with uh region and state so that we are? Um leveraging off of one another's investments in a way that. Uh effectuates some 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 impact on the massive problem before us. And uh I will say that Puget Sound Regional Council, I hear, is having a lot of discussions right now with Greater Seattle Partnership. Uh and others uh about um uh taking their existing regional comprehensive economic development strategy, which is not that old. And ripping it up and saying we need to start from scratch all over again and very quickly. Um and I think there's a lot of push this time that if there is a new economic development strategy at a regional level. That it be action oriented. I think in the past. Uh it has been very broad and purposefully so so that. Uh when you know grant applications, other things emerge from the region, all things could be said as having some way somehow. Fit under the rubric of the existing economic development plan. Going forward, people are starting to realize, you know, economic development can't just be about marketing. It can't just be about. Um splashing the waves ashore in terms of recruiting from outside the area. How do we actually work and invest and grow our existing company base and work on our existing advantages? And doing that's going to take some active coordination role, a lot of our regional economic development entities that hasn't been their typical forte. Um and then that will need to be backed by a plan and a strategy. So we haven't updated our own economic development strategy since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um not saying necessarily that we do need to, but uh we should be uh in conversation and we are. With those regions so that when we're working on a local investment program with, let's say, Impact Washington, Ajax and Green River College. It aligns all the way through uh to what the state and uh region wants to do as well. So. That concludes uh what I have to say tonight, but uh open to questions.
Okay, any questions for Bill this evening?
Adam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, Bill, where are we uh exactly at with Naden? I understand with the economy where things are going. So are we in agreement with our development agreement or we? Waiting on them from a finance perspective? Is that where we at in agreement with?
So the 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 person said agreement was signed, but the development agreement was not. Closed, right? And the person's sale agreement doesn't finalize until the development agreement closes. Uh one of the conditions, one of the milestones was um Hilton Garden Inn uh giving an approval, yes, but then also. Uh Braintree Development um putting down the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that franchise and 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 purchasing that franchise right. Uh Hilton awarded the location in a post covid nineteen world and said this location. Is good for Hilton Garden Inn. Uh Braintree is uh paused and not signed that as they are trying to evaluate the. Um the way forward to them. They have shared, I mean, I I don't think I'm giving away anything here. I mean, as many hotels did, they did pursue SBA. Uh funding and other things and uh their revenues declined precipitously, which I think put a pause on some of their construction destination abilities on the site.
Do you uh see this going forward or is it too hard to say based on where we at now?
I think it's too hard to say where we're at.
Yeah, right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. And so, Bill, I'm curious, you know, with Naden on pause and you know, there's. You know, sort of a pause probably on the interest on the northern side of it. Um is there any talk about temporary uses that wouldn't necessarily? Negate its development use, but is there some sort of like? Plug in here with job retraining or some sort of. You know, temporary facilities, we see these like these, you know, temporary tent like. Structures, you know, like.
Like a tensile membrane structure of some sort.
Exactly, exactly. So I was thinking, is there some way like we purpose this open land that would feed into this job retraining effort?
I would say that um I'm having discussions with um uh key stakeholders about and I have had, you know, openly for years. Talked about uh at the appropriate moment if we had some other interest marrying up. Uh city of Kent uh surplus property to those workforce training opportunities. I think those conversations uh move apace or or are not. Actually held up by covid nineteen. If anything, they might be accelerated by it because of the um growing grant opportunities. Um so which is to say, there might be some pause, but still control given to Braintree and the southern two acres. The northern five acres. Um may still have interest and uh could continue to have um development interest. Even now, and as I pointed out earlier in my presentation. Um deals are still happening in the industrial development world. It's been crazy, but uh projects are still moving forward. And there is um projected that that uh that area will do better than other areas. So going back to the fact that we uh it opened up to manufacturing in our downtown subarea. Uh some year ago, year and a half ago, and given um um. You know, sort of the things that I've talked about in the past at the council, a sort of vision on the north half. Uh that may still attract interest even now. So I wouldn't consider that part paused, actually. What's only been paused is my bandwidth to uh run any process on the north half, trying to stand up other programs.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Uh uh Councilmember Thomas, uh hang on one second. I've got Councilmember Fincher with her hand raised.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Bill, do you have an? Candle on how many businesses we've actually lost that will not be opening back up? Do you have to wait for the survey to get that information?
That's a great question. Yeah, no, it's a great question, Councilmember, and unfortunately, the answer I don't like giving, uh which is I don't have a perfect count on that. Uh when a business closes, they don't go and call up the city and say, cancel my business license. We have no feedback loop in that sense. Uh there is a statute for large businesses with a certain number of employees that have to file something called a warrant notice. Uh we monitor those regularly. Sometimes businesses fill them out, sometimes they don't. There has been some closures. Um the extent of it is actually, uh I just have to call around and and work uh word of mouth. Uh I feel like people are have been hanging on longer than we thought they might be able to um. As I I think my earlier uh council presentation, I talked about the twenty-seven days of cash buffer. That a typical small business has. Um but there have been federal programs, people are resilient, people are creative. Uh I think a lot of people are holding on. Um I don't know how many exactly are going to go dark. Uh that's why I think things like the survey are important and the word of mouth are important. Um and I think it's partly the the same um uncertainty is one of the things that uh. Uh trips up uh real estate professionals who are, you know. Feeling like, okay, I have a sufficient funding. A lot of my institutional partners have a sufficient funding. This is in some ways better than two thousand nine because the financial system didn't implode. How bad is it for the small business out there that we rely on? And they're not quite certain. Uh as days go by, they're getting. Um more uh confident that it's okay, but there's still a lot of trepidation and fear. So I that's very, it's very vague and I'm sorry, uh Councilmember, I don't have an exact count. Uh of businesses. I hope the survey will at least give me something that I can quantify, but even that is kind of uh selection bias to those businesses that took the time to take the survey. Um I won't say that it'll be completely scientific.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for Bill?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm Councilmember Thomas, thank you.
Thank you. The lone guy here. Hey, um. Bill or perhaps Mayor, how difficult on that north, what is it, five acres on Naden? To put up temporary backstops and make some baseball fields for the kids. It doesn't have to be, you know, green grass and all that. I mean. I just thinking out loud here.
I'd I'd have to talk with the Parks Department Councilmember on terms of uh that temporary use. But again, I would say um uh not actually pause on the north half. It might attract interest sooner than we might think in the area that we're talking about.
Madam Mayor, do you think that's a possibility? To pursue?
So a- again, I would defer there to the Parks Department as well. I know that there was. Phil brought in there so the ground isn't compacted and hard.
Okay.
We brought in all of that Phil from the um. The the Fish Project over there off of the river, so.
All right, okay.
Not exactly sure what that would take and and we do have. Um the majority of our sports complexes are closed because we're not in the phase. Of the reopening where that many people can gather safely.
No, I understand that. I'm just thinking ahead a little bit because uh. Uh once this little phase is over and we move into three or four, then it would be ready if we had. You know, had built it or something. If you build it, they will come. Hey, we used to play in the gravel at Kent Elementary there, you know?
Back before there was grass?
Yeah.
Something I will will follow up with the Parks Department on, Councilmember.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
You know where I'm going.
I do. Uh any other questions for Bill? All right, I don't see any hand any hands raised. Um I do want to very publicly thank Bill, Ellis and Michelle Wilmot for all the work that they are doing. To support our business community through this really trying time. Um not uh not limited to putting together the grant program and all that goes into that, but just the answering of. Questions, providing resources, working with the Kent Chamber, the Kent Downtown Partnership. Um and and connecting businesses to resources. Um the amount of work has been. Um has been incredible and I really do think that we have businesses that are um that are in business. Today because of the work that our um Economic and Community Development um group has been doing, so. Um thank you, Bill. Thank you, Michelle, for all the work. Um and I'm sure we'll be having updates soon. Um Councilmember Fincher, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. I had one question. Can you just remind me from the last meeting, will there be technical assistants available? For applicants, uh the business applicants for the emergency grants?
Yes, Councilmember, uh two different sources for that. Uh one of the different language assistance groups that I was mentioning earlier that we were signing up. But um secondly, of course, Green River College uh will be. Messaged uh and on all of our material is also uh on standby to do technical assistance. We are also have uh scheduled time for sort of a Train the Trainers event with uh Craft Three or CDFI and how to take the application with uh. A lot of our stakeholders and and friends and allies in the business development world. To uh then go out and uh communicate that to businesses, also with community groups.
Good. Sometimes people have a bit of understand, a bit of trouble understanding. Are are uh being able to figure out exactly what is being asked in some of the questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That is a common problem. We're trying to anticipate that and have a simple application process and then also have people on standby to answer questions and calls.
Okay, um any additional questions? All right, thank you um very much, Bill. Appreciate the update and all the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number five in the agenda, which is reports from council and staff. This is an opportunity for the council. To report out on the work that is being done outside of the Committee of the Whole and council meetings. Um. We are definitely seeing um a more return to normal with um those regional meetings occurring, albeit over over Zoom or. Or um virtual platforms, but but work um in the in the region is definitely ongoing. So I will start. Um just a couple of things to report out on tonight. Um two transportation related meetings that I attended in the past couple of weeks. First one is the four oh five one sixty-seven Executive Leadership Group. Um. That meeting was, we we meet quarterly to uh talk about projects that are happening in that corridor, that four oh five one sixty-seven corridor. We did receive a report out from WashDOT on things like um. The toll system and the funding that's used to. Uh to further projects that are on that plan and tolling revenue, as you can imagine with um stay stay home, stay healthy. In place is has gone down in in all areas. The one thing that we did talk about it um was that we have seen um a faster. Uh come back to traffic on one sixty-seven and um that's partially due to the nature of um employment for the south end. And um knowing that a lot of our of our residents um in the south don't necessarily have jobs that they can can telecommute. Um too. So we have seen pretty consistent traffic on on one sixty-seven. One of the things that we asked for. Last year from uh WashDOT and the Legislature um a joint request between uh Kent and Auburn. Was a comprehensive plan for one sixty-seven. Um while most of that's that's been put on hold, we did um continue to uh make that request at the meeting this last week. That because we know that traffic may be down on other major freeways, that one sixty-seven has seen that increased um consistent traffic. Also attended a meeting on the Gateway Project. That's the five oh nine project here in um King County and the continuation of one sixty-seven in Pierce County. That project is moving forward. We did receive um a partial. A partial positive answer to a grant request from the federal government. Um for that project, which will help it move forward. So we will see continued progress there. Um couple other events. Um want to say thank you to the um Kent Chamber, the Seattle South Side Chamber, our our partners um. And Labor's uh Labor's Local as well as Rotary Club and many others that participated in the. Um Safe Start Mask Distribution to local businesses that occurred. Um last week, I know that um we ran out of masks. There will be a second distribution. Um this week as well and um providing um providing masks to employers so that they can help their. Their employees um come back to work safely. So thank you to all the partners that were involved in that. That was at Cecil Showware Center. Um in a conversation that I had with Councilmember Fincher today, she asked that I share. Um some work that I have been doing over the last few weeks. For the last four weeks, I've been attending um. Some Zoom meetings with our our local but nationally recognized trainer, Aaron Jones, on race and equity. She put on a twenty-one day challenge for um for local leaders and I participated in that program. Came away with some um some pretty incredible knowledge, history. Um around institutional racism and how we can um bring those kind. Bring actual change about in our systems. Uh do want to let everyone know that tomorrow our leadership team will be having a day long meeting on um. Not only talking about some of the things that we've already been worked, that we've already been doing at the city around race and equity, but. Um developing a plan for what going forward looks like. um developing a plan for what going forward looks like for additional training um for city employees and continued outreach to the community um around race and equity. With that, I am going to turn it over to Derek Matheson, our Chief Administrative Officer, for his report.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Ralph. I have uh three items this evening. The first one is masks. Um, the governor's latest uh proclamation regarding masks went into effect today. Um, and the city has received a number of questions and concerns about masks. And I think it's important first to point out that this is not a local issue. This is a state issue, specifically a governor issue, um and that mandate applies um statewide. Um, as a law enforcement agency, we're borrowing um our stance from the Washington State Patrol, which is that the statewide face covering order is a public health and safety measure. It is not a mandate for law enforcement to detain, cite, or arrest violators, but rather an evidence-based and safety-focused directive meant to slow the spread of a potentially deadly disease. So, meaning that we are going to focus on education and not on arrests and citations. As an employer, we've directed our employees to continue to wear masks at work, except in a few very limited circumstances. Um, secondly, um some council members had questions today about fireworks and so I wanted to let everybody know that Chief Padilla um will um give a comprehensive presentation at your next meeting on July twenty-first, which will include statistics from this year. Um, third, wanted to mention that the Association of Washington City's City Vision Magazine um is going to feature Kent's response to COVID nineteen, including workforce, budget, and business impacts in an upcoming issue. Um, the writer interviewed and photographed three city leaders and we expect that edition will come out in August. Um, the rest of my report is in your packet and I'm happy to report there is no executive session this evening.
All right, thank you, Derek. Um, one thing I did want to add, we have received questions from um both council members and the community about mask distribution to um to residents. We have um partnered with multiple nonprofits in um their work in, in making sure that those um masks are being distributed, especially to our community members that are, that have the highest need. So um they're, just like there's been business distribution, there's also been um through our, through our nonprofit partners, um masks being distributed or, or the cloth face coverings being distributed out to our residents as well. The, um, at this point, I will turn it over to Council President Trautner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had one presentation at our budget workshop earlier this evening. It was a presentation on the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two biennial budget review. And the city officially kicked off budget season today. We are a little bit behind schedule in the process due to COVID nineteen and making some adjustments earlier this year, but everything is ready to move forward with that process. So it was a high-level presentation. We heard about some of the governmental funds, where we are now, what it looks like in the future, as well as the general fund. Um, and I just want to thank our Finance Director, Paula Painter. Um, she's doing an excellent job to get us prepared and work with council members and staff throughout this process. We've got um a pretty full calendar between now and the end of November when the budget gets approved. Um, there'll be opportunities for us to hear from the departments and also um make sure that we get all of our own questions answered. So a lot going on between now and the end of November. And if you didn't get a chance to see the workshop, just a reminder that we are now televising those. So you can watch them on Channel twenty-one or catch them on Kent's YouTube channel. I also sit on the Regional Law Safety and Justice Committee and the Regional Transit Committee. I don't have anything new to report, but I will have things to talk about when we have our next council meeting. So for that, I'm going to look to my council members to see what things they have been up to and I am going to start with Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee and we had a meeting and first was the proposed changes to capacity charge rate structure. How do you fit, what are the neutral, any issues with that? And then I also Kent Human Services. And we have individual stations for twenty twenty-one to two funding. And this week we're discussing those other group and we're trying to figure out who, uh, what.
I think we kind of lost some of that communication. It was a little bit in and out. Um. I am going to move on and um we'll come back to Councilmember Michelle if she's got more information to share. So I'm going to move on to Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Um, I serve on Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council and we will be meeting tomorrow morning. Um, and the rest of the committees, I will have probably meetings next month or the following month. I'll have updates on those, on those as well then. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the um Affordable Housing Committee for King County and also the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council. And we have not met since our last, my last report, so um I don't have a report this week, but I should have something to report next. Council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, SCA Vice Chair, uh, will be meeting uh tomorrow at uh seven o'clock. I'll also let you share, uh, there will be a panel for SCA Racial Equity and Justice Series, um Session One, that will start on uh Friday uh at uh two thirty to four. Myself along with Councilwoman Fincher will be on the panel for discussion and um Madam Mayor may not know yet, but she will be kicking this off for us as well too. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I serve on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority along with uh Council President Trautner and uh Councilmember Boyce. And we really just kind of do some general business. We met on the seventeenth of June and we will again be meeting on the fifteenth of July. Again, just kind of general business right now and uh five thirty, uh Station seventy-eight in Covington. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. For the Arts Commission, we have our meeting tomorrow and the Kaleidoscope project, the Kaleidoscope. Well, I'll say the kaleidos, just kaleidoscope. Uh, art series, that was the theme of the last art series for Kent Creates. That has been wrapped up and judging is now going on. You can see that at kentcreates.com. You can take a look at all of the art. And uh it will be a little bit of time before the winners are announced, but you can get a, a look at all of the applicants now. There's, I think, just over fifty of them. The KCD Kent, I'm sorry, King Conservation District. We have wrapped up the annual report that will be forwarded on to King County Council uh for their approval, hopefully their approval, and all will be finished there for the five-year pro, five-year work plan that we are just wrapping up at the end of this year. Then we have MID, Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council. As I mentioned last month, uh, there's going to be seven million. Remember, there was the uh deficit of about twenty-two million this year and twenty-three next year. With the seven million reserve, that means that we won't have to cut programs that are already in progress this year, but there will be reductions coming from programs that have not yet started. We will not be starting those and then looking at underspends and programs that were going to expand. Those are also going to be put on hold. Right now, there, the cuts that were done included therapeutic courts being reduced by fifteen percent. So there was a uh other robust conversation as to how the cuts were made, if that's the wisest place for the cuts. And of course, looking at that with an equity lens. So looking at the impacts, who's going to be impacted and uh how dramatically, making sure that equity is considered through all of that. Uh, and wondering if they, if the therapeutic cuts, courts should be cut as deeply as they were. So with MID, supporting the behavioral health and recovery of the residents of King County, they're using what's called a sequential intercept model. And uh so what they want to do with that, introducing that, the idea is that looking at the intercept points in a person's life, you know, what happened when, especially remember we have those who are incarcerated and we're always were also working to keep them out as well, to keep them from returning, as well as to keep people from going to jail in the per, first place. But looking at how they enter into uh the system through traumas that brought them to the point of needing help, figuring that the earlier you intervene, offering it to someone before their problems are so severe that it takes a lot more, both in money, time, uh and everything else that seemed to be able to reverse that. So catching people and uh helping them behave with the behavioral health issues with the solution that fits them, because it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all type deal. So that's where they are looking at all of those type things and uh we also discussed the principles, the guiding principles for King County to follow, King County Council, when they actually do approve the cuts that they are looking at. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. I know sometimes during these meetings, we have difficulties. Um, Councilmember Michelle, did you have anything else that um you needed to share?
Thanks, Council President. So I don't know what came through and what didn't. Uh, uh, I serve on the Kent Human Services, Kent Round of Reviewing Applications for twenty twenty-one to twenty-two funding and we will be working more on that.
Great, thank you. Um, and if I can just take one moment of personal privilege before I turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say happy early birthday to Madam Mayor, who has a birthday coming up this Thursday, July ninth. I um hope that your family treats you extra special and does something wonderful for you on Thursday and I wish you a very happy birthday. And that ends our reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. All right.
I won't sing.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Um, okay, um, thank you all, councilmembers, for um the work that you are doing representing Kent um to our region. Um, I am very, very grateful. With that, we are going to move on this evening to our public hearing. We will now hold a public hearing on um the ordinance repealing and replacing Kent City Code Chapter fourteen point zero nine entitled Flood Hazard Regulations and Amending Section eleven point zero three point seven two zero to update references to Chapter fourteen point zero nine. That will all make much more sense after we have um our staff presentation. So staff will give a presentation, then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. And um a reminder to councilmembers that they may ask questions during the hearing. If you're in the virtual meeting or on the phone line, you will be provided with an opportunity to speak shortly. After the hearing is closed, council may vote on a resolution adopting this plan. With that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance repealing and replacing Kent City Code Chapter fourteen point zero nine entitled Flood Hazard Reg, Regulations and Amending Section eleven point zero three point seven two zero to update references to Chapter fourteen point zero nine. The public hearing is now open. I would like to ask uh Chris Wadsworth to make the presentation on this map.
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, thank you, Mayor Ralph, Council President Trautner, and the members of the council for all your time. Uh, my name is Chris Wadsworth, Flood Plan Administrator for the City of Kent. Now, I realize it's tough to think about flooding in July, uh, but as I presented to the council at Committee of the Whole on June ninth, I'd like to walk you through proposed changes to Kent City Code Chapter fourteen oh nine. Uh, these changes include proposed addition of FEMA's updated flood maps. Uh, Kim, you can go back one slide, please. Um, and, and required code changes to remain compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, additionally, this ordinance will amend Kent City Code Section eleven oh three seven twenty to update references to Code Chapter fourteen oh nine that have been revised. And a vote on adoption of this ordinance tonight is necessary to meet the deadline for adoption set by the National Flood Insurance Program. So at the federal level, the two entities we're concerned with for flood hazard regulations are the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and the National Flood Insurance Program, or the NFIP. So in order to continue participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, which makes subsidized flood insurance policies available to anyone in Kent, there are minimum requirements that we as a city must adhere to and maintain. These include adoption of the latest FEMA flood insurance rate maps, also called FRS, uh, as well as updating our flood hazard regulations to meet current federal requirements for participation. So the, the new flood maps from FEMA need to be made effective by City Code on or before August nineteenth, twenty twenty. And the maps are not a significant update to the currently effective nineteen ninety-five flood maps. This minimal update is largely due to what's called levy seclusion. Now, without getting overly technical, uh levy seclusion is, is basically FEMA's way of admitting that at this time, they don't know how to accurately map what occurs on the landward side of a levy that has not been accredited. But this means that in areas protected by unaccredited levies, the data from the nineteen ninety-five flood maps remains effective. Now, unlike the flood maps, the update to Kent City Code Chapter fourteen oh nine is significant. Uh, on the right, we see the Green River Trail under SR one sixty-seven during the February high water event in the Green River, which sort of stresses the importance of these flood hazard regulations. Uh, the proposed changes standardize the format of the chapter with the rest of the city code to make it easier to administer. It updates many of the defined terms. It codifies the adoption of the twenty twenty flood insurance rate map. And it provides a more clear definition of the special flood hazard area, which is just a technical term for a regulatory flood plain. Uh, so this photo was also taken during the Green River High Water Event back in February. This is Frager Road across from the Signature Point Apartments. Now, on the local level, these code updates help to clarify the application of Kent's flood zone permit. It also formally designates the flood plan administrator, which is currently myself. Uh, the flood pain administrator works to administer and maintain these regulations, as well as keeping the city in compliance with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. So here we see the Green River beginning to overtop the trail below the Meeker Street Bridge from that February high water event. Now, the body of code revisions establish general, specific, and floodway standards for development. Uh, the update also revises procedures for violations, enforcement, and penalties in a way that follows the standards set forth by other Kent City Code chapters. So I'd like to take a, a brief moment and walk through a couple examples of these code changes. So here, we have an example of a change to the specific standards portion of the code for crawl spaces. Uh, crawl spaces must meet the following requirements in order to be allowed when developing in a flood plain. But first off, the interior grade of the crawl space must not be below what we call the base flood elevation. Uh, the height of the crawl space, measured from the top of the foundation wall down to the ground, may not exceed four feet at any point. And flood vents or engineered flood openings must be present on at least two walls. So this type of construction was used on several homes built along Woodford Avenue here in Kent. Uh, and the points clarified by this update will make achieving code compliance more transparent and easier to understand for developers in the future. Uh, as my last example, I'd like to briefly discuss a change to the city's floodway standards. Now, a floodway, generally speaking, is the moving portion of water supplied by a stream, a channel, or a river, and then the adjacent land areas that are needed to discharge those floodwaters. Uh, in the photo, on the right, we can see the floodway of the Green River across from LA Fitness. Uh, this code update clarifies the requirements for fish habitat enhancement projects within floodways like these. Now, first and most importantly, these types of projects must be designed to minimize impact to base flood elevations. Uh, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis must show Hydrologic and hydraulic analysis must show that the base flood elevation is kept as close to zero as is practically possible. Further, the project must not affect any insurable structures. Lastly, the project must be in compliance with all federal, state, and city regulations beyond Kent City Code fourteen oh nine where it's applicable. Now, just to reiterate, the National Flood Insurance Program requires that the code changes and the new flood maps be adopted and made effective by August nineteenth, twenty twenty, if Kent is to remain as a participating community. A vote on this ordinance tonight is required to meet that deadline. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Council, do you have any questions for Chris this evening before we move on to public comment? All right, I don't see any hands raised. Kim, do we have any public wishing to provide testimony on this item this evening?
I do not.
Okay, and any written testimony that has been submitted?
None were submitted.
All right, so having no testimony being submitted, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
A move.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The public hearing is now closed. Council, is there any discussion or debate on this item? All right, I am seeing none. Then with that, a motion would be in order.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please. I'd like to make a motion about ordinance number four three six one, repealing and replacing Chapter fourteen point oh nine of the Kent City Code, entitled Flood Hazard Regulation, and amend section eleven point zero three point seven two zero of the Kent City Code, entitled Critical Area, to update reference to Chapter fourteen point oh nine.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, and thank you, Chris, for your presentation this evening. All right, we will move on to item number seven on the agenda, which is public comment. And I do want to remind everyone that during the coronavirus emergency, the public will not have the opportunity to provide live comment, but written comments may be submitted to the city council at citycouncil@kentwa.gov, or anyone wishing to call in their comments. That can be done at two five three eight five six five seven zero zero. I do have two written statements, one that was asked to be entered into the record and one that was asked to be read. So I'll go ahead and read that public comment now. The email says, "The message below is to be read for public comment during the Kent City Council meeting on July seventh." "Good evening, Mayor Ralph, Council President Troutner, council members, and city of Kent residents tuning into tonight's meeting. My name is Shahida Lopez, and I reside within the Kent jurisdiction specifically in two nine two one two one hundred and twenty-third Place, Southeast Auburn. Before I state the specific reasons for my public comment, I would like to first thank Mayor Ralph and councilmembers Larmour, Michaux, and Fincher for taking time to respond to my email and tell me how they plan to speak for the specific needs and interests of people of color that live in Kent. I would also like to express my disappointment with Council President Troutner, councilmembers Boyce, Corr, and Thomas for not responding to the question I sent via email. I know that everyone is busy, but I hope that in the future, everyone will take time to respond to the community members you serve. Living and working in Kent has allowed me the opportunity to see the racial and socioeconomic inequities we are victimized by. As a Black community member, I watch my white neighbors who have been empowered by years of systemic racial inequities advocate for policies and changes that meet their specific needs, and I cannot be mad at that because, given our nation's history of oppression, my neighbors are simply doing what they are taught to do their entire lives. But what I realized is that the white voices in the Kent community that are empowered to speak out, speak drown out the needs of those who are not white and do not have the history of empowerment and privilege to rely on. If our response to this is to think about all of the opportunities that Kent residents have to speak up during your council meetings, I will ask you to advocate, to educate yourselves on reasons why people of color do not actively participate in our democracy. But given that, I'm sorry, but given that more than sixty percent of Kent residents are in fact people of color, it is important to make sure that the city of Kent does not, what does for its people and how the city chooses to spend its money should benefit everyone's needs, not just the needs of those who speak up repeatedly. With that said, my first request is for the city council to ensure that your upcoming fiscal budget meets the needs of all of our residents by ensuring socioeconomic and racial equity in the way monies are spent and services are offered. Also, as a former school administrator in the middle school located in Kent, I've had the opportunity to interact with Kent police officers in the school, and from my purview, there's a need for ongoing training to ensure officers are prepared to interact with children and racially diverse populations. One of the many incidents I witnessed from a Kent police officer was watching how quickly and easily he escalated by raising his voice and using hurtful language towards a seventh-grade Black girl who was quietly rolling her eyes as he lectured her on the impact of her behavior. I quickly ended the meeting and asked myself, if this officer gets this upset over a teenage girl quietly rolling her eyes, which is what many teenagers do, how does he react to children in challenging situations? I've also had the opportunity to listen to the unfortunate interactions between children and adults in Kent that they've had with the police, and given all that, I know I would like to, one, urge the Kent City Council to prioritize the dignity and basic human rights of people who are forced to interact with the Kent police, and require officers to act if they see a fellow officer taking inappropriate, illegal, racist, biased, or unethical actions. Number two, urge the Kent City Council to require that the police department undergo anti-racism training. And three, urge the Kent City Council to restructure the Kent Police Department funding in order to prioritize the availability of social workers and mental health professionals that can respond to nonviolent scenarios that require social and mental services. I look forward to learning how and when these four requests will be enacted. I also look forward to supporting the city council and the Kent Police Department in any way that I can in order to help move these requests forward. Thank you. The second letter submitted asks that it be entered into the record. All councilmembers do have a copy of this email, so I will go ahead and paraphrase it. It is from Lyle Price, a forty-year-long resident for the city of Kent. Mr. Price's concerns are focused around the unauthorized use of Wilson Playfield during the pandemic. Our athletic fields are closed at this time, and he has witnessed many unauthorized users on the field while they are closed. He did provide some suggestions for different locking mechanisms and some fencing around Wilson Playfield in particular. It is my understanding that the Parks Department, if they have not already made contact with Mr. Price, that is in the works to discuss that current unauthorized use at Wilson Playfield. Okay, so that ends the public comment that I have for this evening. We will move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is a compilation of the work that the city council has done over the last several weeks via Committee of the Whole. We have items A through G on the consent calendar. Is there a motion for adoption?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to accept consent calendar items A through G.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We have no other businesses this evening, but we do have two bids. Joining us is Tim Laporte, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I hope I'm coming across clearly. Please let me know if I'm not.
It sounds great, Tim.
Thank you. The first project that we have is a part of our water system improvements on the West Hill. It's difficult to come up with names for pipelines, so of course, we call this one the Reef Road Water Main Improvement because it's on Reef Road. This particular main is a large water main. It's a sixteen-inch water main, which is relatively big for water mains, and this is going to help service the fire flow on the West Hill. As council is aware from previous discussions, we are in the process of adding a new water tank on one of the higher elevations of West Hill, basically up by the armory up there off of Military Road. And this pipe will be part of the connection system to that that will enable the water service up there to be much better than it currently is. So we do recommend awarding this portion of the project. It will be done in multiple phases, very similar to the improvements that we have made on the East Hill with the new six forty pressure zone. So you can see the location. It's right opposite Lake West Fenwick Park, basically goes from thirty-eighth to forty-second. And again, it's not unusual to do a water main in pieces. We've done that before. It's actually a bit more efficient. And frankly, we have very good bids, as you'll notice in your packet. We do recommend awarding this contract to SCI Infrastructure. SCI has been around for a long time, and we've had multiple projects that we've worked with them on that have all been very successful. So with that, I'm open for any questions, but I do recommend awarding. And at your pleasure, Mayor and council, I can go on to the second award, or we can stop and award this one.
Are there any questions for Tim on this project? Okay, I don't see any. Should we go ahead and we'll entertain the motion on this, and then we'll move on to the next one?
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move that we award the Reef Road Water Main Improvements, Thirty-Eighth Avenue South to Forty-Second Avenue South Project to SCI Infrastructure LLC in the amount of six hundred fifteen thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion. Second, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Tim, we will move on to the second bid, the South one hundred ninety-second Street Sanitary Sewer Repair.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This project is at the opposite end of Kent, right off of East Valley Highway. As you can see from this project location, it's roughly a couple hundred feet just east of, I'm sorry, just west of East Valley Highway on one ninety-second Street. This is a bit of an alarming condition, as you can see from the next picture. This is a failed side sewer that failed from this business. The business, there's a Texaco there and a kind of like a strip mall that leases space from the property owner, but essentially what happened is they had a failing side sewer. The side sewer is the lateral that goes off of the sewer main, which is roughly fifteen feet deep in this location. And the sewer, the side sewer failed, so it allowed material to be sucked into the sewer main. Remember that the water is always flowing relatively slowly, but it's always moving, so it sucked in a lot of fines earlier this spring. And so we had to close the road because there was no way of, you can see the patch in this particular, this picture tells it all really, but you could see we added some overlay problems, and then we ended up TVing. I think councilmembers have all seen our little sausage-shaped camera. So we TVed the sewer main and discovered that the side sewer was disjointed. In other words, it was broken, which allowed all of the infiltration to occur, but during with high water, the high-water table is probably only about four feet lower than the surface of the ground at this time. So effectively, it created the settlement. It's a little bit like the sand grains coming out of the top of an hourglass, you know, as you watch them fall below, and then they get swept away by the actual flow in the sewer line. So that side sewer failure, in our opinion, created a settlement underneath the sewer pipe, the sewer main itself. And so that, there is really no easy way of fixing it. We've been monitoring it for the last two months. It's the kind of project that you want to do when the tide is out. That's my vernacular for when the water table is lowest. So by awarding this project now, we're able to do it in August, which is the best time. We did get seven bids. The low bidder was Scarsella Brothers, who are frankly right around the corner. And so we're very pleased with the bids, and we do recommend awarding this. I'd also like to point out, we will be working with the law department to establish, you know, liability of the adjoining property owner. We're not really prepared tonight to speak to that other than to say that we're reviewing the information to see where the responsibility lies for fixing this. So that's, shall I say, under investigation. But in the meantime, we do have to fix it, and fortunately, it's not November, December. Otherwise, we would have been taking other measures, but this is definitely something that needs to be fixed at this time. So with that, I'm ready to answer any questions. We will, of course, repair the roadway after this is done, which is part of this bid. Well, thank you. That's the end of my presentation.
Okay, any questions for Tim? Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim, I'm just curious, did they self-report this year, or did something we found out on our own?
You know, I'm not sure which occurred first, councilmember, but they quickly repaired their side sewer, which was also very expensive because it was deep. But the side sewer kind of comes up at a, let's say, a forty-five-degree angle, so they were able to get out of the water table fairly quickly. But I don't recall which came first. It's possible, you know, our staff is trained to look for telltale signs like this. And I don't know which occurred first. I do know that I first discovered it in February on a Saturday when driving down the street, which is not something I typically do, and it's like, whoa. So then, but whether we reported it to them or they reported it to us, I think probably what happened is Rob Lavelle, our sewer department, you know, anytime we see a new sinkhole like this, the first thing we do is send out our TV crew to TV the line to see what's going on. So my suspicion is we discovered it first.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make the motion to award South one ninety-second Street Sanitary Sewer Repair Project to Scarsella Brothers, Inc., in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred one dollars fifty-nine cents, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Tim, for those presentations. That brings us to item number eleven on our agenda, which is executive session. We do not have one this evening. So with that, we have come to the end of the meeting. Just want to remind everyone, please wear your masks if not for yourself, for the people that you're around. It really is the best way for us to come out the other side of the current pandemic. So stay safe and take care of each other, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.